...from achievement.
Good evening. Our first presentation tonight for accents on achievement is in recognition of National School Bus Safety Week. If our Transportation Union President, Mr. Lyle Mosman, and our Director of Transportation, Mr. Andy Martin, could please join board members and Mr. Patrick Torres.
Okay, um, good evening. In recognition of National School Bus Safety Week, I'd like to read this proclamation of appreciation. Whereas the U-46 Transportation Department serves nearly 27,000 students daily, transporting children to 57 different sites each day. U-46 drivers make nearly 1,500 bus stops and drive more than 22,000 miles each day. Whereas, the contributions of these talented and dedicated drivers, assistants, mechanics, and office staff are recognized in honor of National School Bus Safety Week, October 21st through the 25th, 2013. And whereas, the U-46 Transportation Staff not only lends their special skills and talents to the efficient operation of the school system, they also have played a significant role in the district's quest for continuous improvement. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education recognizes its talented staff prior to National School Bus Safety Week, October 21st through 25th, 2013, and asks administrators, teachers, students, parents, and the community to join in recognizing and thanking these individuals for their dedication, efforts, and service on behalf of children and youth. Presented this 21st day of October, 2013, signed Donna Smith, President, Board of Education, and Jose M. Torres, Superintendent, School District U-46. Thank you very much for the work that you do transporting our children safely, giving all of the kids, 27,000 students, 22,000 miles every day. Um, that is incredible, the job that you guys do, and we're very thankful and very grateful that you all do it so well and safely. Thank you. (applause). We have bus drivers here?
Maybe a couple more bus drivers.
Please stand and be acknowledged. Thank you very much.
Our next accent on achievement is to recognize a talented young woman who plans to become a teacher. Destiny Alisea currently serves on the Illinois State Board of Education Student Advisory Commission along with 17 other high school students from across the state to provide student input regarding Illinois' education policy. Destiny is a student at Elgin High School, volunteers at her church, and is involved in Elgin High School's mentor program, Link Crew. She has demonstrated a dedication to field of education since her freshman year at Elgin High School when she began taking early childhood education courses. Currently, she is participating in an education internship where she spends two hours per day assisting Mr. Lucas Kelly, a sixth-grade teacher at Huff Elementary. Destiny, if you please join us, and Principal Coe, please join us as well.
(applause). Shake your hand. Okay, this is a certificate of achievement. The school, a Board of Education, School District U-46 hereby recognizes Destiny Alisea of Elgin High School for your achievement on being named to the Illinois State Board of Education Student Advisory Council presented the 21st day of October 19th, 2013. Congratulations. (applause). Yes, let's say. Stand up, please. We're looking forward to you coming back and teaching. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the district improvement plan.
For our district improvement plan report this evening, we have Dr. Suzanne Coloma, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Ms. Laura Hill, Director of Assessment and Accountability, and Mr. Pat Maggi, Director of School and Community Relations. We're going to present to the board the education results for ISAT and PSAE for 2013 along with 12th grade students meeting target for college readiness standards. And what Pat's going to be presenting is the employee engagement results.
Good evening. This year, the State of Illinois made significant changes to the Illinois Standards Achievement Test, ISAT, for students in grades three through eight. In January, this, the State Board increased the cut scores. What that means is that a higher student score is required to meet or exceed standards. It does not mean that a student is less knowledgeable or is less capable than a student was in previous years. Instead, the State Board raised the bar on how well students are prepared to meet college and career readiness benchmarks. Secondly, the 2013 test included 20% of items that are aligned to the new Common Core standards. These standards are higher, fewer, and deeper than the Illinois Learning Standards in providing greater information and preparing students to be college and career ready. As we continue to view our data, it is important to keep in mind these two significant changes. In U-46, our assessment system allows us to look at multiple measures to drive our decision-making and work. Our multiple measures include MAP, ISAT, EPAS, and Prairie State. This slide shows different benchmarks in U-46. The definition for academically at risk is the lowest 20th percentile on an average of several measure of academic progress assessments, or MAP. Our next benchmark is grade level, which is defined as the 40th to 60th percentile on any assessment. High school ready is a U-46 benchmark of the 50th percentile on MAP. Prairie State and now the new ISAT cut scores are around the 55th percentile. College and career ready is a U-46 benchmark of the 65th percentile. Each of these benchmarks is at different percentiles, which equates to different contextual meanings. This graph, this graph depicts our ISAT performance in reading for 2008 to 2012 for grades three through eight, as represented by the old ISAT test and cut scores. This graph displays our overall percentage of students meeting and exceeding on ISAT for all students. Percentages for each of the grades in reading vary from grade three, just about 70%, grades four, five, and seven, greater than 70%, meeting and exceeding, and grades six and eight, greater than 80% of student, students meeting standards. A special note is, in the past in Illinois, at different grade levels, there were different percentiles or cut scores needed to meet or exceed standards. For instance, in grade eight, to meet or exceed standards, students needed to be at the 30th percentile. Now Illinois has changed so that all grades are required to be at a higher standard or cut score to meet or exceed. The cut scores are each set around the 55th percentile. This chart represents our ISAT performance in math from 2008 to 2012, based on the old ISAT and, ISAT and cut scores. Grades three through eight in math range from 84 to 86% of students meeting or exceeding Now changing over to, this chart represents our ISAT and Prairie State performance in reading for 2013, which is based on the new ISAT cut scores and test. From this graph, the alignment of the ISAT and Prairie State is apparent. Beginning in 2013, students who are testing, using the ISAT and Prairie State have very similar passing rates. Remember that this data represents all students who were tested, including English language learners and special education. One positive note is our sixth-grade performance of 56% of the students meeting and exceeding standards in reading. This chart represents our ISAT and Prairie State performance in math for 2013. This graph also displays the better alignment of the ISAT and Prairie State cut scores. One positive note is fifth-grade performance of 64% of the students meeting and exceeding standards in math. Even with the new standards and cut scores, U-46 students perform consistently better in mathematics. Now shifting over to our high school population, this graph displays our historical performance on Prairie State of our 11th grade students. Our reading data has increased from 45% of students meeting and exceeding standards in 2008 to 50% in 2013. Breaking down our Prairie State reading data into subgroups, U-46, Asian, African-American, Hispanic, and white subgroups are at their highest percentage of meeting and exceeding standards in reading on the Prairie State in 2013. The gap between our Hispanic and African-American subgroups is decreasing. Group size is, is also an important factor. African-American subgroup is around 200 students, the Hispanic subgroup is about 1,200 students, and the white subgroup is 1,100 students. U-46 Prairie State math performance has also increased from 46 to 51% of students meeting or exceeding standards. In 11th grade, the increase in performance is consistent for both reading and mathematics. Our Prairie State math subgroup data also displays that each subgroup continues to increase significantly in performance from 2008. In math, U-46 has a larger gap in performance between our African-American and Hispanic In U-46, the benchmark score for Prairie State is a 20 on the ACT. This graph displays the mean score for each subgroup, noting that each group is increasing in performance. The Hispanic subgroup in 2008 was at a mean score of 16.2 in reading, and in 2013 was at a 17.1. The African-American subgroup started at a 15.4 in 2008, then increased to a 17.2 in 2013. In fact, the African-American subgroups surpassed the Hispanic subgroup in reading mean score this year. Both the Hispanic and African-American subgroups are under a three-scale point difference from the college and career readiness benchmark of a 20 on the ACT reading. For Prairie State math, each of our subgroups increased from 2008 to 2013. Our Hispanic subgroup, which has over 1,200 students, is closing the excellence gap and is now 1.6 points from the college and career readiness benchmark of 20 on the Prairie State ACT math test. The African-American subgroup is also decreasing their excellence gap to 2.5 points in 2013. U-46 students perform higher on the math portion of the ACT than the reading, with the white and Asian subgroups far exceeding the U-46 benchmark average of a 20.
And now we transition to the Destination 2015 goals. So the first slide, as we take a look, illustrates the K-12 student attendance, historical data from 2008 to 2013, identifying that attendance has maintained a 94.3% rate for the past several years. Keep in mind, this is one of our measures for Destination 2015 with a target of 98%. The next slide indicates what the K-12 student attendance rate is by subgroup for U-46 students. All students average 94.3% for attendance, our Asian students average 96.2%, our African-American students average 93.9%, while Hispanic or Latino students are a 95.5% attendance rate, and our white students average 95.6%. The next slide illustrates the achievement gap based on our poverty status. As you take a look at the rate in 2008, there was a 4.2 achievement gap rate as compared to a 4.3 in 2013. Additionally, we have data to illustrate the 12th graders on target to meet college readiness standards. So you take a look at the historical data from 2008 to 2013, you will identify that in 2008, 38% of the 12th graders were on target to meet college readiness standards, and in 2013, 42% of our 12th graders were on target to meet college readiness standards. This measure looks at graduating seniors who score 21 or higher on the ACT. The next slide illustrates 12th graders on target to meet, to meet college readiness standards by subgroup. As we take a look at the data, historical data from 2008 to 2013, you identify that our Asian students in 2008 had a 57% of 12th graders on target to meet college readiness standards. In 2013, 64% of those students were on target to meet college readiness standards. 2008, 55% of our white students were on target to meet college readiness standards, and in 2013, 59% of those students on target to meet college readiness standards. In 2008, our African-American students, 15%, were on target to meet college readiness standards, and in 2013, 17%. For our Hispanic or Latino students, in 2008, 13% were on target to meet college readiness standards, and in 2013, 20% of the students are on target to meet college readiness Next slide illustrates the high school dropout rate. In 2008, 3.2% was the average rate for School District U-46, and in 2013, that rate is at 2.1%. Additionally, the next slide shows the 2013 graduation rates, both the four-year rate and the five-year rate for each of the comprehensive high schools, as well as School District U-46's four-year rate and five-year rate for graduation, as it compares to the State of Illinois as well. Next slide will illustrate the five-year graduation rates by subgroup.
For employee engagement, our results went up significantly, significantly in our most recent employee engagement survey. The questions are based on the Gallup Q12 and results that last by district degree. We modified the response form this year from five responses to four per question. We removed the agree more than disagree, since we realized it meant essentially the same thing as agree. Now, it is simply strongly agree, disagree, and strongly disagree. Some factors that could have influenced the level of engagement, it's always at the beginning of the year, people are usually rested and enthusiastic at about the start. Two, we provided laptops for all teachers, and in several instances, we received feedback that were very responsive with the heat situation by lowering the room stats and dividing water to staff. So our next steps is we're continuing to review the comments for action items in areas of growth, and as well continue to work on an overall employee engagement plan, and also realizing that employee engagement is everyone's responsibility within the organization.
Continuing with next steps as we consider the ISAT and PSAE results for our students. A language arts and math curriculum audit has identified the scores that you review tonight are based specifically on reading or math, so that audit to review the language arts and math curriculum, including standards, resources, and additional content. Support for instructional development via collaboration to continue to provide supports for all teachers and instructional support and resource staff to provide the both the best rigorous opportunities for all students to succeed in U-46. Additional strategies for closing the achievement gap, and focused attendance interventions for all students. At this time, we can ask the board if there are any additional questions concerning the presentation.
I guess I wanted to ask a general question about what each of you may be encouraged by in these results. I feel like from year to year, we get the situation where we're not able to compare apples to apples, and so it continues to be, it's, it's data, but it's, and again, it's hard, it's, that comparison is just so hard. So I'm, I'm curious if you could, just in a general sense, answer what you're encouraged by as far as the results, and maybe what you're discouraged by in some of the results.
I'll, I'll answer mine from a data perspective, and you know, when the, when the state can tell you that they are equalizing their test scores, you just believe them. But then when we take a look at the U-46 data, and we can see that 50% of our 11th graders are, are meeting or exceeding standards, and then we look to our elementary grades, you know, it's a very similar pattern there. So when the state said, "We're re-equalizing to make it look exactly the way we want it to," where we have this more rigorous standard, they did exactly that. So in my mind, I was, I was very impressed to see that it actually played out exactly that way, and it, it played out that same way in mathematics, you know? So, so the faith that we had behind what the state was saying actually, actually was held true in our data.
I think the thing that I'm, I'm most encouraged about is certainly as you take a look at the PSAE data at the secondary level, that test has been very consistent for the past five years, and so you look at the continued growth for our students, and you notice growth incremental in some areas larger and in other areas for our subgroup populations, but you do see steady growth for U-46 students in that PSAE. You could potentially back map that farther to take a look at some of the ISAT data and how that has progressed as well. So I, I think that's a positive. I also believe that the, the drop in the high school dropout rate is kind of, is kind of positive as well.
I guess I have a, an observation about what's discouraging and what's encouraging from, from sitting here, and that is, you know, one of the things that I find really discouraging for us is that it's been nearly impossible to establish a baseline for us because the instrument changes, the, the thresholds, the cut scores are constantly changing. And so I think for us, looking at our own accountability plan, it's very difficult to get an accurate baseline. What's encouraging for me is that, you know, I spent my entire life here, I grew up here, I know we have a lot of students that come to us with a lot of risk factors, and I am really encouraged and proud that though the progress is slow, and it feels really frustrating at times, we continue to move the needle for kids who have a lot of risk factors, and that we are also continuing to hold the bar high for kids who show up to us proficient and ready to learn. I guess I'm wondering if we're starting to have internal conversations and considerations about how we look at our district, our Destination 2015 plan, based on the fact that we don't seem to have very good baselines, because we use percentages in some places. We have some baselines that we know will hold true, but we have some percentages in some areas that we've chosen where the baselines aren't going to hold true, and I'm just wondering if we're sort of starting to think about those kinds of things.
And we have, I, I would say that the challenge has been that what we thought was the most robust assessment, the math, which was not part of the ISAT or PSAE, that we had a lot of control, actually changed on us. So last year, when we presented data to you, we had to say, well, we, our baseline worked up to this year, but now there's a break, as it were. And so, what we're beginning to do is beginning to think and plan, how do we measure success? What do parents really want? And so we're beginning to think about what is the, sort of the, the second, sort of revision to Destination 2015 as we think about five years from now. And I think what the board did in adopting Destination 2015 in 2010 was very bold in that we said, we're going to put our data out there whether, you know, sometimes, I know, I've struggled with weight, and one way to not struggle with weight is not to weigh yourself. Well, you know, I, that way doesn't, you know, I, I don't see what happens, right? And so, we have chosen to weigh ourselves in the world. We have put the data out there, we've made some progress, and we've put some really sort of kind of intuitive kinds of measures together. So if you, if you want your dropout rate to go down, you want to keep as many of your struggling students in school. If you would like to have your achievement levels go really high, it's very easy. All you got to do is push all the underachievers out, and only then, high, higher achiever kids take the assessments, and therefore your achievement levels go up. So you could play with the data to, to, but when, when you have attendance and dropout rates and achievement levels and fiscal responsibility and balanced budget, add the same, all in the same playing field, then you have a much more, sort of harder road to, to navigate. So what we're going to do is we're going to be, we're beginning to think about how, what does it look like if we think about five years from 2015 or, you know, you can't wait to 2015 to do it, but how do you, what, what would be the next level? And the challenge right now with, in all of our districts nationally, is that we're beginning to teach toward the Common Core, but the assessments are old legacy assessments that we're still accountable for. So, so that's the challenge that we're also moving to. We will provide some update to the board once we get sort of structured in this.
I mean, to former Curber's point and Dr. Torres's as well, I am really encouraged that we're seeing progress, although at times, for certain measurements, it does feel like watching grass grow sometimes. And I'm ABD, so that particularly is hard for me, I don't have that long of an attention span. But nonetheless, I recognize it as progress. In the face of, as we've discussed, I think what makes me really proud about U-46 is that we do educate all children. Everybody who crosses our thresholds, we try to find a way to educate them. And for me, that's somewhat, I'm a big proponent in many areas of being outside of the box, and a lot of times, people try to push us into the box of what it looks like to educate kids and what our students look like, but, but we step out of the box, and every child that crosses our threshold has an opportunity in this school district to receive a quality education. Our highest achievers are challenged, and our lowest achievers are supported, and that makes me really proud. I do have a question, and, and I also appreciate the tough targets of having contradictory goals, you know? To your point, we could seriously improve our achievement scores if we don't worry about the dropout, let them drop out, but that's not the right thing to do by kids, and so I absolutely think we are doing the right thing. I do have a question about our graduation rates. Well, the high school dropout rate decreased, so that's going in the right way, but I can't tell from the graduation rates chart historically, and I don't remember historically, if our dropout rates are decreasing, our, our, oh, there is a chart. Well, I want to aggregate.
This is another moving target. So what happened was, Nora, could you, would you explain the, the change in graduation rate formula?
The definition, the state changed the definition, didn't they?
Right. So the, the state changed it to the number of cohort members who earned a regular high school diploma in four years or less. And then we divide that by your number of your first-time ninth graders, so those original class of students who enter that high school in the fall of ninth grade. You also take in, so you add your students who transferred in to become part of that, and then you subtract your students who either transfer out, or immigrate, or unfortunately would pass away during that four-year time span to come up with that graduation rate.
So the graduation rate changed, meaning the, the data, but if you'll remember, even when we had graduation rates that showed 88% of the students graduating within the four-year, which was what was happening, I would explain to the board that there's something wrong with this picture because our dropout rate was around 3. three or four percent.
For the rest of those kids?
So this is actually a more accurate picture, but you can't, but you don't have a baseline, you don't have sort of the, you know, have we been doing better or worse? We don't have that data because, again, the formulation and the target map is different.
Would you have a guess that we're doing better? Or about the same? I mean, I know, you don't have the data.
Who would have to look?
I'm not asking.
I don't think you can, I don't know if you can do that.
We don't have the data. Okay. And then in terms of our next steps, is the second bullet point support for instructional development via collaboration? Can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure. So working to be more supportive of that collaboration process for our teachers. We've got a lot of conversation about that process at this point and what that might look like. So working with our school improvement planning teams and those cohort groups that have been coming together to be more active in planning that collaboration time so that it aligns with not only the Destination 2015 goals, but also the goals at specific sites, our school sites for their school improvement plans. And really working with the assistance of our assessment office and also our curriculum and instruction program to create action items for those buildings so that they are providing either professional development in-house, providing, receiving professional development through our curriculum and instruction, or even seeking outside sources to assist in meeting the needs of all of our students. But really looking at how our subgroups and specific age groups of students are performing, what we can be doing to collaborate to have a joint effort, goals moving forward, and also tracking that success. We've been working with our assessment office to be able to actually create a plan, to be able to look at our own accountability. So when we're either improving our core intensive instruction in classrooms or bringing in interventions, are we going to measure that success to make sure that, one, students have, all students would have access to it, we need to have access to it? It's handled with fidelity, and we're able to measure what that impact would look at to be able to make a determination as to the success of that program and those materials, or whether we need to continue to seek additional outside or other sources to meet the needs of all of our students.
Thank you.
I just had a question about the poverty gap. It's basically the same, you know, 0.1% increase, which is not good. Are we attributing that to any sort of increases in general of those that are counted as in poverty? Or what are we attributing that to? Are we looking at that at all?
That's probably, that's actually a really good question because it's always hard to compare. And again, that's what you would consider not a significant change at all because it's only one-tenth of a point. So that's hard to tell because that's, you know, the class of 2008 to the class of 2013. That's hard, that's hard to measure that way. There just really isn't much change between the students who are paid lunch students and those that are not paid lunch. Yes, there is an end size difference. That is, that is a true statement, too. We'd actually have to dig a little deeper, and off the top of my head, I can't tell you an exact answer as to, you know, is it more students of a particular level versus a different level? I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head.
There's more students who are in poverty.
Right, correct.
Because they're only juniors.
Right. I just don't know that we have.
So that if we looked at the poverty level for our juniors in 13 and our poverty levels for our juniors in '08, we would find that, I would, I would think that we had a lot more students this year that were poor than were like qualifying. And yet, so then to see, and not to, tells you a different story, yeah.
Right, right. Well, and that, the same barriers are not being broken, I guess, to a certain degree with that. And then just on the graduation rates, a couple of the schools have almost 10% of their students graduating in a five-year. So we've got, so for instance, Larkin went from 68 to 78. So we have a lot of, and a couple of the schools, like even Streamwood, has almost a 10% difference. Are we looking into that, why we're, why we have, I mean, 10% is a lot. I mean, I'm glad they're graduating, that they're sticking it out for another year. That's what I'm reading here, right? They're sticking it out for another year. So.
Could be a summer.
Yeah, could be a summer.
It could be summer.
Yeah, right.
That's good to know. I'm wondering if you can split that up because we're talking about a class versus an entire year with credits. And that's a big difference, both in time and cost. So that would be helpful to tease that out a little bit, too. Thanks.
Thank you.
About six or so years ago, I've read something about graduation rates, or maybe it was on NPR, I don't know. Graduation rates nationwide being around 50-ish percent. And since then, of course, they've changed the definition. Is Illinois better than the national average? Generally, do you know?
Again, it's hard to compare because each state has different, why don't they also have different definitions? If we all had a common definition, it would be easier to do. Then again, is why we only gave you the state definition and the state numbers as compared to U-46.
There's some publications, Education Week does use the same definition and uses all the states. And we can find that, I got an article in, I'm sure. I think Illinois definitely is on the higher end of definitions.
Yeah, I keep in mind graduation requirements vary by district to district, even within a state, and certainly also very greatly state by state.
Any other questions?
Oh, PSAE tests are just for secondary, not for elementary, right? And the ISAT is only for the elementary?
ISAT is for middle school and elementary.
Okay.
And PSAE is only for junior.
Right, that's what, I just wanted to, I got.
Anything else?
Can I share the last year for ISAT? This, I'm sorry, is this year?
This year.
Last year.
It is, it is, in the, in the way we call it ISAT, that is correct.
But we don't know what's coming next, right? Right? We don't know what's coming next.
We know it's, we know it's made.
Supposed to come next.
Right.
I don't know if it's actually going to be.
So this is it, this is yours, this is it, you're correct.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So next speaker on our agenda is public comments. Our first speaker is Rick Newton.
We are now at the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes public comment from the audience. The protocol of this part of the meeting is for the board to receive input for consideration and not necessarily to answer questions, provide feedback as a group at this particular time. Persons who wish to speak must first turn in a request to speak card. These cards will be accepted until the first speaker has completed speaking. When your name is called, please complete presenter's table and speak into the microphone. Speakers should state their name, address, and relationship to the district at the beginning of their comments for the public record. Each presenter is logged in up to three minutes. If tone sounds, comments should be concluded as quickly as possible. Finally, presenters who wish to leave for the board can give in to the meeting. Are there any cards to be turned in at this time?
Muy buenas noches. Nos encontramos durante la porción del orden del día donde la Junta Educativa le da la bienvenida a un comentario del público. El protocolo de esta parte de la reunión es para que la Junta Educativa reciba información para ser considerada y no necesariamente para contestar preguntas o proveer comentarios con un grupo durante este tiempo particular. Las personas que desean hablar deben entregar una tarjeta titulada "Petición para dirigirse públicamente ante la Junta Educativa." Estas peticiones se acertarán hasta que termine el primer orador. Cuando escuche su nombre, por favor acerques a la mesa de presentadores y hable directamente en el micrófono. Los oradores deben decir su nombre, dirección, y su relación con el distrito antes de comenzar su comentario para el registro público. Cada persona tendrá tres minutos para dirigirse ante la Junta Educativa. Si escucha una señal, deberá concluir su comentario lo más pronto posible. Y finalmente, aquellas personas que desean dejar material escrito para la Junta Educativa, por favor, déjenlo por mi lado. ¿Alguien desea hacer un comentario?
Good morning. Thank you.
My name is Rick Newton of Wayne, Illinois. A couple meetings ago, or one meeting ago, two weeks ago, somebody had asked me before the meeting if it was going to be a very interesting meeting because the agenda seemed pretty bland. And my response was, you know, never let the agenda fool you because I never let this, the board fool you into thinking that something could happen because that's generally when something, true feelings will be revealed. We have come before you, many of us as parents and taxpayers, to talk about issues which are, in many cases, not something that, in which we are in agreement with the board. And it is, it is still a shutout to this day in terms of never getting any direct feedback from anybody. And it is also rare that we get any written comments back. We recently went through the proposal for the budget, in fact, went over a six-month period, and there was never responses back, even in the, in the last two meetings before. When we talked about specifics, we had people ourselves that were poring through the budget, trying to understand what was going on, never getting any feedback from the board or the administration. And at the meeting last, last two weeks ago, the question was raised, which I would describe as just being very audacious. And it was a question that was targeted at Mrs. Nolan and Mr. Napolitan, asking why they voted in opposition to the vote of the rest of the board, as if that was something that we, that we strive for. That is not, that should not be your objective, to have unanimous votes. It should be, the question was good in the sense that there was some, there was an inquisitive nature, but it came two weeks late. Why was that question not answered or asked in a prior meeting? That would have been the appropriate place. Why was there not listening that occurred relative to comments that were made? Mrs. Nolan talked about the class sizes and ratios. Mr. Napolitan had talked about what is the return on investment for these increases, and there was never a question. And yet, the question was asked, so you tell me why you voted against it because I'm, and I don't have to tell you why I voted for it. In fact, I don't have to ever tell you because you never do. You never reveal what's behind your votes. And that's called obdacity. The other thing that came up in the last couple of weeks was another meeting that I had found just extremely embarrassing. I've had friends from all over the suburbs in the city calling, asking, "What in the heck is going on in your school district relative to hiring?" I saw the article in the Daily Herald, and it's, we want to know, is it really true that we've reverted back to the 50s, 60s, or before in terms of our hiring practices? Because this district says that we need to have, we need to hire teachers that mirror the students. How exactly do you define that? Do we do that by skin color? Do we do it by gender? Do we do it by age? Do we do it by sexual preference? Do we do it by their width, their height? What are the criteria? And who's going to play God to decide that? That is not your role. Our role, our role, your role should be to provide the best education possible, and that has nothing to do with those factors.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rick Dunlap.
Hi, Rick Dunlap from Plainfield, Illinois. I've got a statement I'll leave. Good evening. My name is Rick Dunlap, and I'm here on behalf of the International Union of Opera and Engineers Local 150 to voice our concern over the demolition bid presented by Mullenhouse Environmental. On July 9th, Kane County sent a bid award notification to Mr. Daniel Coyne at Mullenhouse Environmental. And in this letter, it referred to Mullenhouse as, quote, "Your firm." Coyne's involvement with Mullenhouse should be a red flag to U-46 as a result of his 2007 felony conviction for failure to remove asbestos. In 2005, corporate, excuse me, in 2005, Coyne's corporation, corporations, ACES Demolition and ACES Environmental Consulting were demolishing a Dantnic's building in the city of Chicago, and Coyne was servicing as an asbestos inspector. According to the Illinois Attorney General's Office, quote, "Coyne provided the city with fraudulent inspection information in his capacity as an asbestos inspector." After Coyne declared the area free of asbestos-containing materials, more than 3,000 linear foot of asbestos insulation were found within the building. Coyne pled guilty to this offense, but has been representing Mullenhouse as recently as this summer. As a public body, and especially as a school district, the safety of constituents and children must come first. In addition to the questionable connections of Mullenhouse, I have concerns about the workforce that would be brought in for this project. Mullenhouse does not participate in federally recognized apprenticeship or training programs, so U-46 is not able to verify the skills and abilities of the workers who would be employed on this project. Well-trained workers are more efficient, and employees, skilled workers reduce delays, cost overruns, and accidents. The board received several other bids from responsible contractors who invest in skill and safety training through a federally recognized program. I ask that in making its decision, the board consider that the lowest bid is not always the best bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Ringholz.
Just so you know, I did perim those four binders for the board. I didn't make one for everybody because I tried to save a tree. I hope you don't mind. I don't mean to be redundant. I wanted to address the same topic that Mr. Dunlap just addressed with the board, too. For those of you that have the packet, good evening. My name is Michael Ringholz. I'm a field supervisor for the Indiana-Illinois Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting. We're a labor management organization established to support, promote, and encourage fair contracting by providing a quote-unquote "level playing field" in the public construction arena for contractors, workers, and taxpayers. The FFC sent a FOIA request to District U-46, referenced the demolition project in question here. Numerous documents were produced, and I have some of those in this packet here. If you go to Tab A, there is a memorandum directed to Ricky Sparks, Director of Business Services, recommending that this project be awarded to the lowest bidder, Mullenhouse Environmental, for the sum of $87,000. It also includes the bid tabs for the other bidders on the project. Tab B includes the entire School District U-46 demolition project, number 193, instructions to bidders that they're supposed to follow in submitting the bid. Tab C includes Page 2 from the instructions. I would like to specifically reference Item B6, which states, "Bids by a corporation must be signed in the name of the corporation, followed by the signature of the president, secretary, or other persons duly authorized to bind the corporation in the matter." If you go to Tab D, the bid package was submitted by the low bidder on this project, Mullenhouse. Please note that on the proposal, it was signed by, quote, "Jim Mullenhouse," with an asterisk next to it, and the words "Dan/Rep" next to it. I believe this references to Daniel Coyne, whom Mr. Dunlap was talking about earlier, who was also observed at the bid opening on this project representing Mullenhouse. Tab E is the corporate file from the Illinois Secretary of State's office, which lists Mr. Mullenhouse as the President and Secretary of Mullenhouse Environmental. It should be noted that I don't believe that Mr. Mullenhouse signed the submitted bid proposal, and that his bid should be rejected because I believe it was signed by Mr. Coyne. Tab F goes into some of the other documents, specifically tying Mr. Coyne to Mullenhouse, and that's the FOIA document that our office received from the Kane County Forest Reserve, addressed Mr. Coyne on behalf of Mullenhouse, awarding that contract that Mr. Dunlap spoke about. Tab G is specifically a copy of the press release from the Attorney General's Office, citing the case of Mr. Dunlap mentioned earlier, so I won't go into that. Tab H also goes back to a OSHA violation where four serious violations on a demo project were found against the ACES demolition. were found against the ASB Demolition Corporation, which was also owned by Daniel Coyne at the time. Tab I gets into the instructions to bidders. Section K specifically on Page 4 says, "Bidders qualifications," I'm sorry, but the rest of stuff's in there for you to read. You know, bottom line is, I would encourage the board not to find Mullen House as the lowest responsible bidder on this project. If there's any questions I can answer before I leave, I'd be more than happy to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeanette Ward.
My name is Jeanette Ward. I live in West Chicago. I'm going to read Julie Schmidt's letter to the editor at the Daily Herald. She writes, "I am aghast at the growing sense of color consciousness. At first, I was puzzled by the title of Krishna Murphy's article, 'Suburban Schools Aim to Increase Staff Diversity to Mirror Students,' since I couldn't imagine why such an effort would be necessary. Then, as I began to read the opening, Elgin Area School District U-46 is the state's second largest and one of the most diverse. Sixty-eight percent of its more than 40,000 students are ethnic minorities. I was stopped cold by the very next sentence. But they're being taught mostly by white teachers. Think about that. What if that sentence had read, 'But they're being taught mostly by black teachers or brown teachers, or any other color to care to substitute?' Could you imagine the outcry? Wasn't the dream of Martin Luther King Jr. one of a colorblind society? Today, it is evident that we are becoming increasingly color-conscious. Applying the logic of the article, it would imply that a white student is unable to learn from a black teacher, or a black student from a brown teacher. Appalling. In the race, in the racial bias trial against U-46, Superintendent Torres stated, "There is evidence suggesting students gain a sense of empowerment when they see, when they see students who look like them." The response from Judge Gettleman was, "If that were the case, we would have segregated schools." When will we acknowledge the fact that there is only one race, the human race, with all of its wonderful inherent variations? While there are ethnicities and other elements that have always existed, when will we fully embrace the vision that Dr. King had for his children and for all of us? That one day, they will be judged by the color of their skin, not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character?" Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Under the Consent Agenda, we have the Minutes of the Board Meeting on October 7, Edomine Spills, October 21, Personnel Reports, October 21, 2013, Indemnification Agreement between School District U-46 and the Village of Bartlett, Change Order, Abbott Middle, Eastview Middle, and Elgin High School's Elevator Retro Fit Projects, Number 1, Final Hard Rate Builders, Change Order, Kimball Middle School, Chilla Replacement, Number 1, Final Oakbrook Mechanical Services, and Change Order, Larkin High School Kitchen Remodeling Project, Number 1, Final IHC Construction Companies LLC.
Is there any item on the Consent Agenda that any board member would like to remove? In hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda of October 21st, 2013? Any discussion? Your call, please.
Ms. Bydlman?
Yes.
Ms. Neil Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Gerber?
Present.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Schroder?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Under Discussion Action, we have Resolution Abating Working Cash Fund Drawdown Number 6 for $775,750. Mr. Coyne, Chief Operations Officer, will be, is here to answer any board questions.
As I presented at the last meeting, this should be our last drawdown to fund and pay for last summer's projects out of the working cash fund. Do you have any questions?
Are we still holding pretty true our original timeframe that we've had bonds for the past years?
We'll, we'll make it into next summer, which would be the third summer, and we'll probably deplete most of it next summer.
Is that how we plan?
We said three or four years.
And those projects covering the projects that we need, classes that we need to cover, all of them are getting our?
I'd have to go back and refer to the original list that we gave the board.
Unless we change it, I mean?
I mean, there may be a few we changed because of priority. I mean, I, I know one next summer that'll pop up to the top of the list probably is Parkwood's domestic water lines are probably all going to have to be done because we're having significant issues with the piping, which wasn't planned to be done originally in the summer, so that will probably pop up near the top of the list. But, but most of them, the answer would be yes.
Are there any other questions? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the resolution abating working cash fund drawdown number 6, $775,750?
So, second.
Any discussion? Your call, please.
Ms. Neil Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Schroder?
Yes.
Ms. Bydlman?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Our next item is a new board policy that Ms. Schroder and Ms. Nolan were members of the, who worked with our two staff members. Ms. Mybelis is Superintendent for Human Resources, and Ms. Beth Bird, Quarterner of Benefits, and they're here to answer any board questions. This is the delegate, the last one as well.
So we met on actual record, and I decided we were here. Now, this will be board policy. And if you have any questions?
Are there any questions? Okay, could I have a motion to approve Board Policy Number 5.501, Employee Benefits, Employee Participation, and Healthcare Benefit Program?
Still move? Second.
Any discussion? Your call, please.
Ms. Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Schroder?
Yes.
Ms. Bydlman?
Yes.
Ms. Neil Ellis?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Our next item is an opportunity for the board to discuss the November 23th Delegate Assembly and how to advise the U-46 School Board Delegate, to be named, representing the board at the 81st Annual Conference. And Ms. Gerber, do this in the next session.
Yes, there were a number of resolutions, in fact, that were, 15 resolutions that the Illinois Decision to School Board submitted. And I would like to read some of the summaries. Number one is dealing with financing public education, and dealing with charter school reimbursement. ISB shall support a statewide mandate requiring charter schools to refund and/or return any state funding received for its enrollment of a child when the child leaves or no longer enrolled at the charter school. This has to do with the fact that state funding has decreased dramatically, and that the number of charter schools in the state may increase dramatically as well, impacting state funding for public schools. However, the, the, there were different resolutions submitted, so the ISB is not recommending this, this, this resolution. They would like to have a consolidated resolution that comes to the same, you know, that comes on the same point.
Month to the same thing?
Yes. So, so the recommendation for the superintendent's staff is also that this be opposed until they come up with a, with a better resolution.
Are they, do you think they're worth, do you think that'll be part of the work at?
Yes.
At that, on that day? Like that'll be a discussion amongst the delegates?
There will be a discussion amongst the delegates, for certain, whether they, they will come up to what a one specific resolution.
That everyone hopefully can?
The, the second one is something that we've seen before. It has to do with the pension, the normal cost shift. ISB recognizes the pension crisis in the state, therefore does not support a cost shift to local districts as a true sensible solution to a pension burden. They feel that, that, you know, they have to address the root of the problem. The state failing to meet it, the state has to address, you know, its failure to meet its payment obligation. So it's opposing that, you know, the cost of the best, that's in the district. So, so, so the resolution directs ISB to recognize that pension reform legislation was a good provision to fully fund the pension system based on actual early sound financial data and oppose the cost shift. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So the, the recommendation of the?
Can we go?
Yeah.
Can we?
I thought he was just giving examples.
Um.
I'm sorry.
I think, I don't know. I, I don't know how you, how you all feel about this, but in the past, when we've gone through the resolutions for the Delegate Assembly, we've generally seen if there were any questions that particular board members had about any of the resolutions, and highlighted one, one of the, some of the ones that we were recommending, that were, that ISB and the Superintendent's staff were recommending opposed opposition to.
Okay, there really are, well, we have no difference of opinion in terms of what ISB is recommending. And some of these resolutions, like the pension normal cost shift, has come before you. There is a new one, there's a new resolution, that's number three, and that deals with the virtual charter schools, and they essentially, ISB is encouraging that the Charter School Commission develop regulations that ensure state-authorized virtual charter schools, that they meet their full needs of students and follow the intent of current state laws prohibiting the use of public funds for private or educational firms. That's a new resolution, and ISB is supporting it, and the Superintendent's staff is supporting it as well.
And this year, I think this is the first year that I can remember where administration is agreeing with ISB on all of them. So I guess I'd like to just open it up, since we've all seen these, and see if there's anything that any of you would like to discuss that you saw or felt differently about?
A lot of these, well, some of us who have been around longer, I mean, a lot, a lot of these resolutions we've seen before.
And just for Veronica, do you understand what this is?
I think so, yes. And I, my question I was just asking was, Superintendent's staff recommendations are our recommendations, not the state superintendent's, right?
Right, our superintendent's staff.
And that doesn't mean that, that doesn't necessarily mean they're, that's what we would want to do that day. That's just means the staff has studied the implications for the district and have a position on a recommendation.
Now, how many delegates, I don't know if we have?
We have one delegate that goes to the Delegate Assembly. Dale did it for many, many years, so we do need a new delegate this year. But I guess, is there anything that anyone has seen that they'd like to discuss that they may disagree with, ISB and Superintendent's staff? No? Okay. Then let's go to the delegate. Is there anyone who wants to be the delegate for us? If not, I will do it. No, no, I took the communication person from there. I might as well take this from there, too.
I do have a question. How, I see the recommendations of our Superintendent's staff. So, how, if you're the delegate and you go vote, are you voting based on that recommendation, or did you actually take a vote on this?
No, we're both voting on these recommendations unless we have any discussion. And I didn't hear any opposition from anybody. That's what I was asking, is there any resolution that anyone disagrees?
Yeah, there would be any that he was on and talked about. Well, we have not just, we could always, we've got a couple meetings.
Yeah, we've got a few meetings.
If that's what I'm understanding, so if I don't have any tonight, there's still one more that I can ask.
I think there's two more meetings, really.
And then we will vote on them? Do we vote on them?
No, we don't actually vote on them. We just decide how we want to.
There's two more meetings we have discussions with, if you spend additional time and you see something else that comes up.
There's the November 4th and November 1st.
Where, if we had additional questions or discussions regarding the resolutions, where?
What I think we will do is we'll just include it in, in the?
Keep it on the agenda.
Report to the membership.
Okay.
This actually came to you earlier this year, for that purpose.
Meaning not that it's earlier than we normally do.
Oh, I see. I thought you said we'd seen it already.
No, usually we bring it to you the first day in November, so we brought it.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Just want to say thank you, Don.
Well, I don't know, Donna, maybe someone else will change their mind between now and then.
Yeah, we can always have someone change their mind if they want to be the delegate too. We can change that. Whoever shows up as the delegate, I don't have to put my name in early. Okay, next item on the agenda is Board Member Superintendent Update.
So basically, I'd just like to start off with being happy that the first quarter of the year is over, so there's something to celebrate. On another note, Highland is having a Fall Fest on the 1st of November, so if anybody wants to go to that, there, it's on, yes, it's a Friday in the afternoon. Also, NHS deductions are coming up, so I hope to see some of you at Larkins, Elgin, so it's also next week. I know there's going to be, I don't know the specific dates for the other schools, but Larkins is this Wednesday, 23rd, at 7:00 PM. So I'd like to see some of you there. If you can make it, I'd love to. Yes, I would be there. I'm present.
We will have members there. And Marie and I were at Bartwood's NHS on Thursday last week, and that was very nice, too.
And I can't help myself, because I just have to say, there will be a really proud mom at Bartwood's. She's really worried I'm going to cry, but I'll be fine. I'm going to be up there, and I told her I was going to make a spectacle of it.
We can all be so lucky. We can all be so lucky. Um, I got, I don't want, I didn't want to forget, last time I forgot to say something about the Kishawaki dinner.
Oh, yeah.
And it was about school safety. It's kind of like, for anybody who doesn't understand what goes on with these things, there, it's kind of like professional development for school board members, which, so it's a really useful thing for us to keep, you know. And anyway, I got some useful stuff, some useful information, and I was going to give this to John Heterschek so that he could look it up, too. One of the things that just jumped out at me, a little thing that we could do would be so different and so useful, is to put how to call emergency on every phone in every building and anywhere in the district. And you know that's not the way it is right now, so that would be really how useful that could be, you know? You never know when you're going to need it. And it should be on every phone, every phone should be marked, so that even a parent who's stuck caught somewhere could call out and know how to call out. So, little things like that, it was a great presentation that they had.
And I just met, I just had my first meeting of the year with my ETA communication team, and as always, a productive conversation, and I, I do appreciate that opportunity for dialogue and that opportunity to talk to teachers who represent a cross-section. I have a secondary teacher on my team, I have a primary teacher on my team, and I have a specials teacher on my team. So I appreciate that, that ongoing opportunity, and it was a good meeting.
I would like to bring up something that has come up a couple of times in the two-plus years that I've been on the board, and we've mentioned it, but it's really never gone anywhere. And so I would like to bring it up and request, make a formal request, that we look into And so I would like to bring it up and request, make a formal request that we look into this. There appears to be, um, interest from the public in recording our meetings. And I think that's great, because I think that the public should see all that goes on at our meetings. And, um, so I would like to request Dr. Torres that the staff look into what it would cost and the logistics for us to record our meetings. Ideally, I mean, I guess there could be tiers. Ideally, it would be to implement, um, live streaming, right, from our website. But I don't know if our website has that capability or not. Patrick's looking at me like, don't even think about it. But, so, I don't know. All the range of possibilities and, um, the costs, because I think that the public should be able to see what goes on here. So I'm, I'm hopeful that my colleagues will support that, and I'm making the formal request.
What I'm willing to support at this time is investigating the cost of the staff.
Yes, that's what I'm asking for. That's all I'm asking for right now, because we really can't make any decisions without knowing that.
I think we have an discussion until we see if that's even...
That's exactly what my request is, that we examine what the options are and what the costs would be.
I would love for that, um, analysis to also include a discussion with Beacon Academy and, is that the right academy? I hope I have the right one. And, um, how such taping and promotion, or, you know, putting the video out there could be part of that curriculum and what would be possible with those students. They, they did a great job when we held the candidate, when the district and CAC held that candidate forum, and it was really a great job, and I don't see why that couldn't be part of that curriculum.
Maria? You're good. Your agenda, you're good.
To start the, to start the conversation, I think there is definitely some depth to the conversation that needs to be considered, but at this point, I think it's still purely what our objectives are.
Yes, this is the first step. We don't know what we can do until we know what our options are. So I can imagine we need to, I think that's absolutely what we need to do.
All right, got things for that?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to, um, we added superintendent update to this agenda. So that from time to time, I've used the board update to update the board, and I thought that it might be appropriate from time to time to do that. And so I thought the best way would be to, in talking with Donna President Smith, was to add superintendent update as well. And so I just wanted to share with the board a couple of things. Last week, U46 is now part of a consortium of large county, um, let me get the right title for this consortium. Large district consortium of urban suburban school districts. Um, and these are only about 15 school districts of participation that are participating by invitation only. And they've identified what they would call successful suburban school systems that come together to, to share resources and advocate for policies and practices that support continuous improvement in their own districts and across the country. So currently, we have 15 districts that educate more than 1.3 million students, and all of which have around 60% students of color. So they're suburban districts, but they look very much urban in their way. And we've had an opportunity to meet with the Health and Education and Labor Committee from the Senate. And we were there during the federal shutdown, so apparently they had more time. And so we had 10 of them, and they spent almost an hour with the 10 of us who were superintendents there. And the meeting was hosted by Senator Isaacson from Georgia and Nikolsky from Maryland. And the other participants included Senator Tom Harkin from Iowa, who's the chair, Richard Burr, who's a member of the Senate Health Committee from North Carolina, Michael Bennett from Colorado, Sheldon Whitehouse from Rhode Island, Mark Kirk, of course, our own senators, Senator Dick Durbin also came, Ben Cardin from Maryland, and Saxby Chambers from Georgia. And as a result of this conversation, they really, they asked us for some ideas about how to, what would be the architecture for re-authorizing ESEA. And so we're working on that. And so, again, I wanted to let the board know that we're a part of this consortium and we're really a group of districts, and I could share who they are with you as well. The, um, this Saturday, the first Hispanic African-American leadership institute was launched, the first meeting of their, of the team, and there were almost 80 people that included first-year and second-year of Harvard. It's very exciting. Padmanati and the team have done an incredible job with them. Um, and then two other items. This Thursday, I'll be part of the, going to your alma mater, University of Chicago, or there's an Institute of Politics, and there's a session on the politics and promise of higher learning standards. Arnie Duncan will be participating, as well as Greg Hess, who's a director, resident scholar from, at the American Institute. Tim Knowles is moderating that, and John Louie, chair. And the Illinois panel will consist of Dan Montgomery, who's the chief operating, president and chief operating officer of the Illinois Teacher Federation, Robin Sterns, who's the executive director of Advanced Illinois. And I'm the superintendent who's on this panel to talk about the challenge of common core implementation in Illinois. So I just wanted you to know that that's happening. So for that, I think I'll stop.
I have a question about, um, that, do they have opportunities for board members to get together?
So they have an, right now, they have three, three meetings a year that they're scheduling all around advocacy, sharing best practices and providing leadership. So they haven't, they've talked about something else, but they haven't, they're a member, a sub-member of the AASA, American Strategic School Superintendent Administrators. But as you know, we have been trying to be part of the Council of Great Cities Schools. They've shunned us every time that we've tried. So we're still participating in their conferences, as you know, they're very robust and strong conferences. And so we, we attend that conference, but we can be a member of them, and they are the ones who really do advocacy. And so which other group is, will be doing advocacy as well?
What does the advocacy, does the members do to be signed?
Um, no, they, they identify what they call, it's, they, it's the Council of Great Cities School District. And so it's, so Elgin is the city in the suburb. It's not a great city for that. But we're, because we're beyond Elgin, too, as I said, you know, we serve suburban communities. And so many of these districts, Montgomery County Public Schools, Charlotte Mecklenburg Public Schools, Gwinnett, Gwinnett School District in Georgia, and, and some of the others don't qualify for the Council of Great Cities Schools, but they also have some of these challenges. The difference is that they're very high-functioning schools, districts. So Montgomery and Gwinnett both received the broad prize. They, they're, have some successes on their own. Potaway School District in California, Mesa Public Schools in Arizona. And these are all really my key districts. And so we're very excited to sort of meet with them and make sure that's part of this district.
Anything else? Okay, CAC update?
Not too much is new. We had our October, October meeting, and we had a presentation on the transition task force. Had a good crowd, again, we're always excited, we've had a good crowd for a second month in a row. And so had some good questions. The district has made available a couple of feedback that they've communicated to members so they can give their input on the task force's doing. Good number of, good programs coming up, I don't have in front of me what, what one each one is, but we'll be having a program on the common core, for the common core standards. We have a program on safety that seems to always be a very popular topic. We're hoping to have a candidate for the primaries next spring. And of course, we'll be having a roundtable in December. So our next meeting is, I believe, the second day of this year in November, and we're going to see if...
Thank you. Other business?
Under the business, we have the, Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, administration is recommending that the board adopt the resolution ordering the dismissal for clause of Brian Spoluski as a senior teacher for the school district U46.
Could I have a motion to approve the resolution ordering the dismissal for clause of Brian Spoluski, a tenured teacher from the school district U46?
Still moved.
Backed.
Any discussion? Who will call, please?
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Bydlman?
Yes.
Ms. Leonellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerber?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
And next item under other business is administrator and teacher salary and benefits report 2023 through school year. Ms. Magdal and Mr. King, who were introduced, both of whom were introduced earlier, are here to present this item for the board.
The Public Act of 97, 256 requires school districts to report to the Illinois State Department of Education, the ISB, on or before October 1st of each year the base salary and benefits of all administrators and teachers employed by the school district. And the post-report on the district's internet site, we do post it on the internet, internet website. And for consistency across the school districts, once the information is entered into Iowa's the state's reporting system, a report is then generated and sent back to the school. This is different than in the past years. This particular year and for the years forward, the state has mandated the EIS system, which is the Employment Information System now used by the state. The district sends all of the data to the district, to the regional office, which filters it to ISB. ISB goes through all of the information, and upon its return to the district, they send the report that is now posted to the website. This is the same report that is also posted to all other district websites. So it's a consistency piece. There's position codes, and that's what you see on the report. In the position column, there's the name, and then the position has a number. And you will note that the numbers are ranged from 100 to 1,000, but for the report that's sent back to the district that needs to be posted by the state, they only use the codes 100 through 299. So there are each categories that are set as regular education, special education, regular education instructional and administrative. They do not include ancillary staff, office staff, or individuals that are on leave of absence. So the, the list that is now posted, the base salary is posted as the take-home pay. The FTE is full-time employment, which means are they a full-time employee? Do they work part-time during the day? Sick days, depending on the contract of the employee. Vacation days, again, depends on contract of employee. Bonuses and annuities are not listed. They are not included in the report. Retirement enhancements are listed for only those individuals that are in the pipeline or retiring. And then the other benefits include TRS, which is the Teacher Retirement System, IMRF, which would also include benefits and the health benefits for each individual employee. And that is what was posted, and that's what's being presented this evening. Any question?
Are there any questions?
It made me think, what's the base starting salary of that ordinary basic teaching? Just your ordinary genit teacher?
Step one, lane one, I believe it's sitting at 39.4. I have to take a look at the number. I can get that exact, it's in the contract. When you go through the ETA contract, you can see the appendix that goes through the salary. It's either plus TRS or not with TRS. I can get that number for you. I can actually send the chart to Dr. Torres.
What are the full FTEs that have zero sickness?
Depending on, for example, if you note, let me see, here. I'll have to check to see, the example would be like Ree Alman, the teacher on the first page. It depends on the contract, depending on if it's grant-supported, depends on the contract. So I'll have to check on that for you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
This is an item that doesn't require action by the board, it's just a matter of reporting. So we will, if you have any other questions, we can capture that and give them to the board.
Thank you.
Our next item is the capital projects update. Mr. King and, he's being joined by Mr. Johnson, Director of Plan Operations, to present this item.
As we promised a couple years ago, and we sold the work in cash bonds last fall, and then now this fall, we're coming back to the board and providing the board with the list of the major projects that we took on last summer. We gave you a summary of how they were funded and what we did, we described what we did and what we spent to date on each one of the projects. If there's any questions on that, would you be happy to answer?
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, is this approval of the closed session minutes?
Yes.
Well, we can do them all at once, right? I just have to read it into... Okay, could I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes of May 13th, May 20th, June 3rd, June 17th, July 15th, and August 5th? It's also requested that a need for confidentiality still exists as to all or part of the closed session minutes, and therefore all closed session minutes, with the exception of minutes already released, including audio recordings, remain confidential. In addition, all audio recordings more than 18 months old, having been put into writing and approved, be destroyed. Thank you, second? Thank you. Any discussion? Who will call, please?
Uh, Mrs. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Bydlman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonellis? Mrs. Kerber?
Yes.
And Nolan?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The work session, we have bids, proposal. The first one is K-12 data and analytics solution. Mr. Spark, Director of Business Services, and Mr. Williams, Director of Information Services, are able to then be bid and answer any board questions.
A good evening. Our first proposal this evening for your consideration is the K-12 data analytical solution. Administration recommends a five-year contract of the size of K-12 data analytical solutions to the district submitted by VersaFit for a sum of $929,326.48. This cost includes the services and advantage software from VersaFit, hardware, software, systems purchased by the district. This expense will be charged to the education fund.
Are there any questions?
Does this include some sort of support by the company as well?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, there's actually ongoing support in both in the implementation and throughout the five years.
So for the whole period of time?
Yeah, that's part of the, that's part of the cost. As you recall, this is replacing Tetra Data, which is, it's going away.
And we've gotten some, I guess, good recommendations or referrals regarding VersaFit? Are other districts using them, or?
Yeah, we've had several pretty good reference conversations, probably the most notable is Buffalo, New York, which is actually using both VersaFit and Infinite Campus as we are, and so was, was pretty impressed with the interface between the two. Milwaukee Public Schools, Portland, Oregon, Beaver Ridge, Oregon, Chicago Public Schools.
Okay, that was my question. How did it interface with Infinite Campus?
Yeah, so they had, actually, they had had experience building the interface with Infinite Campus and operating that, so that the data can flow pretty freely between the two.
Any other questions?
Is this replacing?
So it's replacing Follett's Tetra Data product, which has actually been the, so you've seen presentations about the, about data, really, that's been collected, really, tonight's presentation was collecting Tetra Data product. Follett informed us two years ago that they were going to drop that product, and actually, they extended us a year beyond many of their other clients' sports, but they said on June thirty-third that it's going away. And they did not have a replacement for that product. They asked any questions.
Anything else? Thank you.
Our next bid is Plan Operations, demolition projects, and Mr. Sparks will be joined by Mr. Javits.
Our final proposal this evening is Plan Operations, demolition projects. Administration recommends a low bid, meaning specifications of eighty-seven thousand dollars that's submitted by Moore &amp; House Environmental. This expense will be charged to the operation and maintenance fund.
Mr. Danz?
Yeah. I mean, it's a big white... What do we do with that? How does that impact, how does the information that was brought before us tonight impact your recommendations? Do we need to revisit this?
Well, we're satisfied with our internal investigation on the tender. I have a sixteen-page document from Brad Con Street, said this is a solid vendor, and we're satisfied with the documentation that we received, and then we could not find a reason to disqualify.
Those, I mean, I appreciate them Brad Street, but I am concerned, and I, I mean, I have the same three minutes of information that everybody else has, which is clearly not enough, and I'm not making a single right now, but I don't know what the implication is of, I don't know if this coin guy is a principal of this company, or?
Mr. Javits, do you know?
Yes. We did some additional investigation, we checked three references, two of them government bodies that awarded a little larger project than ours, very satisfactory reference. We talked specifically with the president of the company, he certified that he signed the bid, we checked, the bid is signed by the president. The other gentleman that was referred in this discussion, he's not a member of the company, he's not a partner, he's not working for the company, he would not be involved in the demolition at all.
Well, he must have at one point, because there is, I just briefly, he was there, because there was a letter addressed to him, to the company, that's addressed to him somewhere in here.
I asked the president of the Almas Company, and he mentioned sometimes he uses him to do some things for him, but on this construction project, he won't be involved, and we personally inspected the project. There is no asbestos in those buildings, because they were already removed, so there is no issue, and he won't be involved, and we verified that he won't be there, and give us assurance that he's not a member of the company. He delivered some things for him and mentioned he did some things, but not on our project.
Do we have an action grant as an special action item rather than a non-representative? Because like Tracy said, we have three minutes of information, and, and information to review that we can't possibly do right now.
How much time have you put into this, Mr. Javits and Mr. Sparks?
We personally, not just myself, it was our architect, Reeke, and myself, we talked some detailed time, we have another employee-checked reference called to the Forest Preserve Park, another village, that just did projects for them. They had thirty-four years in business, the company, we didn't find any faults in the company, not the president, all what's tied was to the person that sit in the bid, you know, in the bid opening, or the deliverer of the bid. So we, we very stringent our inspections, we, in the past, a couple of times, we did not recommend the lowest bidder, because, you know, we have a bid bond, you provide us performance bond, I mean, we go by the book, the place prevailing wage, we don't recommend payment, we provide certified payoff, we go by the book.
What happens if you disqualify, uh, a qualified bidder? Then Mr. Scott is the next.
I believe they would have options to take, against the district. There's no reason at this point that we file to disqualify this vendor.
So I, I mean, if, you know, obviously, the board is concerned, I've already checked with Mr. King. What I'd like to do is do some further investigation, provide some more information to the board, and rather than bring it as consent, bring in a discussion action, and the board can still have more deliberation and have more thorough conversations with the, with the board, with the staff that you have. Does that sound all right?
Yes, yes. The one question that I would like to have some answers for the next time is, is the price discrepancies? So each one of them, at each level, is about ten thousand dollar, ten to fifteen thousand dollar difference, so, but certainly, between the highest and the lowest, it's, you know, quite a bit different. So I'd like an explanation next week as to, or even if we have it now, as to why you think they may have come in so low.
Well, in this business of demolition, the prices vary, and if somebody more, I would say hungry for the work, we see the difference as even a larger bit, so that's not such a common practice, that we have differences in this, or we have bigger differences in the gas, and that worked out, we never process anything before we get our problem delivered, and inspected, before we repay the company.
I, I, so I think what Dr. Torres has suggested is a good idea, and I will tell you that, I mean, what would be more persuasive to me would be evidence of this company, of whatever your due diligence has been that didn't come from the president of the company. Because if the company is a problem, then talking to the president of the company isn't as persuasive as talking to independent sources.
I don't recall them saying that they had an issue with the president.
No, no, I don't, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with the president of the company, I'm saying if there's a problem with the company, and I don't know if there is, but if there's a problem with the company, talking to the president of the company isn't probably as persuasive as getting independent sources. And I don't know what all the, I mean, I listened to them talk for three minutes, but I haven't looked through this packet to see all that they're alleging, is either, maybe all the problems they're alleging is solely, are alleging, are solely related to just this guy having been convicted of some type of fraud, and maybe this guy isn't part of the company anymore, and maybe it's just simple as that, I don't know. But I'm just saying, I wouldn't want all of the information to come from the president of the company that's to be a problem company.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Our, our next item, whether with this company or another company, you still need applications, right?
We should proceed with them, and we could pull them next time if...
So Mr. King is here to, to present the, the buildings that we're looking at, and I'll present each of them, and then you can ask any questions around each other. Letter A is an application for demolition permits, and these are for disposal, for board policy, board point oh seven, three disposable school district properties. A is one thirty-three Southeastern Avenue in Barlet. B is seven thirty-seven Center Street, Elgin. C is six twelve Hill Avenue, Elgin, and D is six forty-seven Laurel Street, Elgin.
What these properties are, the first three are homes that we have owned for years, and all of them are uninhabited, all of them are in very poor condition, and obviously, presentation earlier, we're seeking to tear all the homes down, and make the property, basically turn it back into green space and all the properties. The last one is behind one of our middle schools, it's where our old bus barn used to be, we have some small sheds and things there that we need to take down, at that side as well.
So why do we own these properties?
And I have to put it as thinking.
They're going to do with them.
Probably some...
So the first one, Eastern Avenue, that property was bought through the two thousand bond referendum, to expand and put in addition on the back of Barlet Elementary School and expand the parking lot. We took so much of the property that it'd be difficult to market the property at this point, and the house is in very poor condition. Center Street is located behind Larson, is that right? No, no, that's behind McKinley. We tore one of the houses down, this one sits over on the corner near the hospital property, it used to be where our center house program was, before we remodeled the house behind Coleman and moved the program. Again, we delayed on this one for quite a while, because the city had voiced some interest prior to the economy going bad, to move the home off the property, but at this juncture, the home is in no condition to move, we've asked the city if they still had any interest, they said no. We'd like to remove it from McKinley block that we own at this point, because we have no interest.
Do you have any, like, I know that's an older, a much older home, like a vintage home, so I don't know, do you ever open up for, like, salvagers, to, like, for, you know, hardware and woodwork?
Part of the bid was, the contractor can salvage whatever they can, and that's
the reason they would use the bid, because they have some, sell some parts, recycle it.
All those, the demolition contractors?
Takes whatever is safe.
Then that stuff leaves the district, I mean, the neighborhood, and there's plenty of neighborhood associations, but I know the GPA is certainly interested in salvage of...
Well, the concern we would have with private parties going into the property is to let paint in the site.
They always sign greeners.
Yeah, but I don't know that we want to engage with twenty other parties to go in and take what they prefer to take out of the site.
Also, the building is in very bad shape, there's leaks, and animals got in, and it's not in good condition, and it's unsafe to, so I agree with you.
The last home is on Hill Avenue, that is behind, that's the one behind Larson. We have, years ago, the district had a strategy, they were trying to buy up, buy up more homes on that block. We did buy several prior to my tenure, and created a parking lot on one side, an entrance to the backside of the building. We expanded the parking lot out to the east, near this property where this home sits. We've had water issues on the site, we expect that at some juncture, we'll probably run a water line, or storm through this lot where this house sits right now, because we've had flooding issues within the parking lot that was added back there, because the water really doesn't go anywhere. It sits underground, and then when, once that tank underground fills up, the parking lot fills with water. So we'd like to recognize that.
Are there any other questions?
The demolition company that you had, they're gonna salvage other stuff like copper pipe or anything like that's in there, too, and recycling, right?
Whatever is on the site, that's theirs, and that's how it...
I'm sorry, what was the Laurel Street?
Laurel Street, there's just some, there's some sheds that we had used in the past, our old bus garage used to be down there.
The maniac street, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
And our final work session is change orders, and I will go ahead and introduce all of them, and, and then you can ask, you can present each one separately. So these are change orders, Prairie View Elementary Roof Replacement Number One Final, CSR Roofing Contractors, Inc. C is EC Middle Exterior Metal Wall Plating Restoration Project Number One Final, All American Exterior Solutions, and C is Larkin High Asbestos Abeyment Number One Final, EHC Industries, Inc.
The administration recommends the board approve the change order, final change order for the Prairie View Elementary School for the amount of minus eighty thousand six hundred twenty-one thousand.
Any questions?
The administration recommends approval of the change order in the amount of minus thirty thousand dollars for Eastfield Middle School Roof Amoled.
Any questions? Okay.
And the administration recommends approval of the change order in the amount of plus seven thousand eight hundred dollars for Larkin High Asbestos Abeyment.
Did I hear you say something about, maybe I was mis- overhearing, but I thought you said something about, I hope I heard you say something about opening up an elevator shaft and finding all kinds of nasty stuff in there that you couldn't have seen otherwise, and that's why this is increasing?
That was the other project last time.
Oh, okay.
This is...
Why is this gone?
This is similar, because a lot of pipes were inside the walls, so we couldn't figure out what's there, so once we opened the walls, we found some insulation, asbestos, and asbestos also in the joints, right, and some filaments.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. And the last item on the agenda, so if anybody had a motion for your...